Okay.
Welcome to the Tuesday, November 12th, 2019 Board of Selectmen's meeting.
All right.
I'll go over the agenda. Seven o'clock, we have citizens input. Seven oh five, we have an Eagle Scout presentation. Seven fifteen, we have a fire and police staffing study presentation by MRI consultants. We have a selectmen's update, town manager's update, assistant town manager's update, a few action items, and then after the meeting, we're going to go into executive session. So I'm going to have Sam lead us in the pledge of allegiance, if you would please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Anyone here for citizens input? Seeing none, we're going to go right into the Eagle Scout presentation. So I put you on the spot right away, but being an Eagle Scout, I'm sure you were prepared.
Come on up and say that they will.
Yeah, come on up. Tina, you can come up, too. You're used to that.
Yeah.
Sam loves it when I join him in things, so absolutely.
I got a citation I'm going to read from the Board of Selectmen. Commends Eagle Scout Samuel Belanger, Troop Seven, Foxborough, on achieving the rank of Eagle Scout in the Boy Scouts of America. Recognition is given to Samuel Belanger for attaining the rank of Eagle Scout and for organizing and leading the development and construction of a POW/MIA memorial and set of benches located at the St. Mary's Cemetery, Foxborough, Mass. Sam, your patriotism, love of country, and respect for the military fueled your decision to lead and deliver this project, and for that, we are very proud of you. You have made a place for residents and visitors to reflect on and remember those prisoners of war and missing in action who were brave enough to serve our country and sacrifice greatly. In concept, design, and construction, you remain focused and organized. You were resourceful and enlisted the guidance of Father Matt Westcott and John Ricker of Morrison-Begg's Monument Company. May this recognition express our appreciation for the many hours spent securing donations, obtaining materials, as well as recruiting and leading sixteen volunteers through the project's completion. Congratulations on your achieving the rank of Eagle Scout. We would like to commend you on your dedication to the ideals of scouting and earning twenty-seven merit badges, and for the leadership skills you have developed and demonstrated in scouting. You have set an example for many others to follow, and we wish you continued success in your endeavors. The Board of Selectmen is very proud and grateful for your successful efforts and would like to join your fellow scouts, family, and friends in the Foxborough community in honoring you. This citation is given under the seal of the Town of Foxborough on this twelfth day of November, 2019, signed by the Board of Selectmen, Mark Elthman, Leah Gibson, Edward O'Leary, Dave Feldman, and Chris Mitchell. Congratulations. Well, those of you that haven't had a chance to go down and see it, it really, truly is an amazing memorial. I think you did a phenomenal job, and I was really rather didn't put one and one together till just now that it was an Eagle Scout project. It was, you know, far and beyond. If anybody has a chance to go down and take a look at it, it is amazing. So congratulations.
Thank you so much.
I'm going to do a photo op.
Picture.
Well, I think Sam has just been.
He has just been in the.
Send in for the West.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, we can do that, yeah.
It is outstanding.
Congratulations, sir.
Another shake.
Congratulations.
I should go right in, gentlemen.
My gentlemen.
Excellent. Thank you.
Well, Sam, while Sam is getting settled back in there, I just want to comment that our Veteran Service Officer, who's in the back of the room, and I, we're at Memorial Day along with Sam and his family, and as we made our second stop along the route in the morning, it was at St. Mary's Cemetery where he, you know, kind of cut the ribbon, and the VFW and American Legion were there with a nice crowd of folks, and it was a great and glorious day, and it unveiled a project, beautiful, beautiful work.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good luck, Sam. Good job, Sam.
All right. I think you guys are probably ready for the fire and police staffing study presentation?
We are.
All right.
Should we take these seats here?
Please, yeah.
Sure, come on up. Somebody going to drive the presentation or?
Sean's going to be bashful.
Maybe introduce yourselves.
Absolutely.
You're the tech guy?
I'm the guy that's going to hit a button.
So I can introduce the team. My name is Alan Gould, and I'm president of Municipal Resources, Inc., otherwise known as MRI. The firm is about thirty years old. We specialize in a lot of public safety-type projects, and we've done projects from South Carolina to the Canadian border and out to Pennsylvania. So it's pretty much an eastern seaboard. So this is kind of was two projects that we kind of put together, but they're really a little separate. And one was the police study was kind of a follow-up to our 2016 report where we took a pretty good look at, you know, in a traditional way, at policing, and that was when Chief O'Brien was leaving, and you knew that you were going to have another chief in, kind of maybe help set a roadmap, roadmap, rather, for some priorities for the new chief coming through the door. And then this review was a kind of a higher level, another review, kind of next step of what the opportunities might be for staffing on the police side. The fire side, which Brian will talk about, Brian's our Director of Fire Services at MRI, and he'll walk through the fire study. That was more traditional organizational study. Dave Kurz is one of our lead law enforcement consultants, and he and I did the police piece of this. So we were just going to walk through the two presentations, if you will, and it's up to the chair whether you'd like us to stop in between to take questions or go through both presentations and then answer questions. That's up to you, sir.
Okay. Well, we'll get started.
All right. So Dave, work your fingers on that thing.
Okay. So this was, as Alan was saying, was in conjunction with the police aspect was done in conjunction with when we worked with Chief O'Leary to identify some things that the new chief, who had yet to have been identified, might focus upon, and we thank you, Chief O'Leary, for giving us a lot of insight for that. So this really, as Alan was saying, marries, mares, or marries, the idea of putting some, looking at positions within the department that might be either suited better for civilians or at least be an opportunity for some forward thinking, which is what the manager asked us to look at was some potentials for those things that might be civilianized and offer opportunities to the community so that policing in Foxborough, which is really is almost saddled with something that most police departments in New England are just would be overwhelmed by, and obviously Gillette Stadium is what I'm talking about, where so many people come here, not only is, you know, is it television from all over the world on Foxborough, but the department has to step up in what would be considered an unusual occurrence for a police department of this size is a very usual occurrence for you folks to have to deal with. So what we did is focus on all of the position that a civilian could do but are currently being filled by police officers, and with the idea being that it's simplified in that it's generally easier to buy or identify people to fill those civilian positions other than a police officer, which it's very structured, very time-consuming, very labor-intensive as far as the testing that goes along with it, the background investigation that is And then the other thing is the skill set is the same, but you're taking a police officer who is currently, it's interesting, we didn't realize that we have a new chief, and what I was dealing with was Lieutenant Grace. So when I came down here.
What's it?
So, yeah, he was working diligently to provide a lot of data, and there was a lot of silence at one point, and one of the things that we're going to recommend is a human resources person at the police department, because not only do you hire people on a frequent basis, and it's very time-consuming, but every event that you have at Gillette requires the hiring and retention of a whole bunch of people to come in here and organizing that. That takes up time that might better be served by a civilian. So anyway, I wasn't getting any response from the good lieutenant for quite some time, and I said, you know, have you been on vacation? He says, no, I'm in the middle of a hiring process, and we're doing this, we're doing that. So in other words, he was so busy that he couldn't even respond to the task that he had at hand. And what we're suggesting to the department, to the community, is that there are opportunities that may exist to look at civilianizing some of these positions, with the idea that generally speaking, they're lower salaries because the police department is already unionized and has a structured salary system. They're not interrupted by, they don't have to run to the next call if something traumatic happens that people have to stop everything and go, and then, like the lieutenant, was doing a lot of things in the department, and now he's chief. So who's going to do those things that he was doing as a police officer that gets promoted out of the position that he was overseeing? It becomes problematic. The continuity, the institutional memory, all those things happen. So that's, there's opportunities that we see for you to consider. And actually, kudos to you because this happens in larger organizations, generally speaking, but I'm the police chief in Durham, New Hampshire, where UNH is located, and we have twenty-one officers, I think you have about thirty-six here. We're not that dissimilar. Larger agencies are generally looking at civilianizing, so like I say, I think it's nice, advanced thinking about some of these opportunities. So on the information technology, there's over three hundred pieces of technology equipment within just the police department. With the study of the fire department, we see an opportunity that maybe there's an ability, because you are already forward-thinking and putting fire and police in a public facility, public safety facility, that a person with IT could do both agencies and be part of the town's IT program. So the idea that all these pieces of technology are just the computers, the scanners, the printers, the access card system that goes in, this video system, on and on and on, that, and that's just, that's just the police side of it. So there's a lot of opportunity here that with continuity of one person looking at that. And I want to go through this quickly, and if you want to ask any questions, please do so, or we can do it at the end if it comes up. The other thing that's really being, has become problematic for police departments across the nation is that with, there's a general philosophy of, there's not a lot of support services for people with mental challenges or under stress, and what ends up happening is the only people that you end up having available is 911 and the police go. And that is really problematic because you're thrusting, you know, I hate to be simplistic about this, but you're thrusting a person who has the skills of a carpenter to rewire a house, and the reality is, is that they're not capable of doing that, plus there's pressures of calls for service, which they don't have, they don't have options. Someone calls for service, you've got to go. So calls back up, and these crisis calls aren't solved in a minute. You can try to arrest them and solve it, but that's not solving it. And then, like, twenty-five percent of the police shootings in the United States are with someone who has some mental challenges. So if we could slow this down with a person who had the skill set to do so and assist the police in doing this, it might be more helpful. And this is, there's a lot of opportunities that might be involved with having a mental health person attached to the department. Not only that, but even the fire department, again, an opportunity may exist there on medical calls and all, but there's no focused expertise. They're police officers, they're not mental health workers, but yet they have to deal with this in some quickly expedient way because there's calls backing up elsewhere. They could do training to the department on what we refer to as crisis intervention training. There's a forty-hour block that assists the police officers in how to deal with things. I mean, you can imagine how police officers are trained to run towards a crisis, and sometimes we have, we now have to retool this profession and almost back up a little bit and recognize when a person's in crisis, that if they have a knife to their neck, for instance, is pointing a gun at them, drop the knife, drop the knife, going to calm them down a little bit? I don't think so. So there's all this stuff that goes on that is maybe simplistic in the aftermath, but we're trying to allow the department to be proactively thinking about that. They could also expand into doing other community engagement, educational opportunities, and then in the aftermath of these issues, which, you know, just keep occurring if it's not satisfied, they could do follow-up with the family or whatever the situation was where there was the crisis. So that's an opportunity that exists there. Another big one that would be resolved by both departments would be fleet maintenance. There's thirty-three vehicles in the police department, there's fourteen vehicles in the fire department. You know, one mechanic would be able to manage all of these issues and do it expediently. So we want, that's something that we thought you might want to consider. Already, you have two firemen. Brian can talk to this later, but apparently, there's two firemen who are committed to doing maintenance. Well, if they're not doing that, then they have to stop in between and answer for calls or whatever. So you can see the opportunity that exists there. And I mentioned this when I was trying to get a hold of the good lieutenant, now good chief, that the recruitment or human resource person that would be beneficial, not only with the fire department or the police, in the police department, but possibly with the town, in doing other positions also. But when you're hiring police officers, it's so time-consuming, it's challenging, and you're trying to hire the right people for the community that would serve the citizens of Foxborough. It's a unique challenge for any human resource person. In addition to these things, they could also handle on the front end any discipline issues, grievance process, manage the personnel files, you know, different anniversary dates that may be associated with pay steps. There is a slew of different things that a human resource person who is located and assigned to the police and the fire department could resolve. And an analyst would be, for this sized department, we probably would not have suggested an analyst be hired on a full-time basis, but you have Gillette Stadium, so these events occurring, I mean, there's, last, there were forty-three events, generally speaking, over the average annually, and it consumes, to do one event consumes collectively about twenty-five hundred hours. That's a lot of time to put a plan together for any event that's occurring in a venue like Gillette Stadium. So when you think about it, you're hiring a police officer, an employee who works fifty-two weeks a year, you have to pay them, budget them for fifty-two weeks a year, for forty hours, that's two thousand and eighty hours a year, and already you have a person who's doing more than that on an event at Foxborough. It's staggering challenge for a community this size. So we can see how that would be a lot of potential for an analyst to determine the most expedient way to go about doing things by having a, the workload analyzed, by having the, what you're going to need in a certain event, you know, if you have this event here, does it need this much as if the Rolling Stones were coming? That kind of thing is different from each time. Evidence management is, as far as, this is something that is simply done, it might be a part-time situation, but it takes up a lot of officer time to, when evidence is maintained, it's the most integrity-bound thing that a police department does, is to maintain evidence and then make sure that it's still there, that it's still in possession of the department, the evidence that needs to be analyzed at the lab is being transported there. Think about how an officer traveling, has to travel to the lab to just drop evidence off, how time-consuming and downtime that is. A civilian would be much, would be able to do that at a far cheaper rate and not be taken off the street to do so, and/or taking up detective time, whoever does it at the current time. It makes some sense to consider these kinds of things as an opportunity where you could look at a more cost-efficient way to utilize your personnel. So that's the very, hopefully, I didn't take up too much time as far as on the reviewing, the workload analysis on the police department to determine potential civilianization of a number of positions that would, are being accomplished by the department but are being accomplished by people who are usually higher pay rates and getting, and higher pay grades, and then move on as they get promoted.
So if I could just recap, that's a ton of, Dave did a really good job of getting through a lot of material really quickly, and that was so that we could get to whatever your questions or comments are. You know, I think it's our opinion that Foxborough's a really good police department, and they'd be doing a good job if, you know, all around. When you look at the surge capacity that they have to have for any of these events that happen at the stadium, I think they really do a remarkable job. So by taking this deeper dive and looking at other specializations, some of these positions could be full-time, some of these could be part-time, it's really a matter of keeping the cops to cops and having other people with maybe specialized skills, specialized backgrounds that could do these other things and wouldn't be promoted out of those specialties, could commit more fully to those areas, and then the cops are still the cops. So you're able to do even more with the department you already have, particularly as it relates to the surge capacity that you see for any of these events, which every year seem to be more and more frequent. So did you want to take questions now, sir, or? Yeah, anybody have any questions?
I do. So you kind of went over like six various different positions. Are they joint positions or just for the police department?
Oh, I think there's opportunities that exist, and that's why I wanted to make clear, I think you were already forward-thinking of making a public safety facility where you have police and fire together. There's clearly an opportunity for both agencies to do multitasking of these individuals. I mean, if you're in the same building and you have one IT person for the building, that totally makes sense. A human resource person, for instance, could do hiring of everyone in the building and even help out if needed with the town for whatever. So yes, I think they have dual purpose, and I think that would be the most expedient and most cost-effective way for you to do so.
Probably the only, the only position that we suggest that wouldn't be, wouldn't cross both sides would be the evidence person, and I think that that could be a part-time position as well. But when you look at the HR function, certainly, there's so much HR to do, particularly with the, with the officers that you bring in for these events, the hiring, as Dave said, the tracking, the files, discipline, grievances, all of that. The mental health, social worker, we kind of called it, those are the highest repeat people you're going to see. I mean, I'm sure the chief knows who, in the term we use, the frequent flyers, the people that get the attention a lot of the time, some of those people have an imbalance that police officers and firefighters are not necessarily all that well-equipped to deal with. We do it because with the catch, you know, we're that net, that safety net. But certainly, if you had somebody on staff that could do the follow-up and do more specialized follow-up with these folks, that's going to prevent the fire and the police call, because on many of these mental health issues, you're getting both. The calls being made and police and fire responding at the same time, and they're highly repetitive, because you have the person today, they're probably going to call you tomorrow, next week, next month. It's just going to keep happening. So, you know, we see those positions as being, and the mechanic as well, as really being able to serve both departments. The governance of it would have to be worked out, who's reporting to whom, where do they fit in the hierarchy, but that's all very achievable if there's a desire to make that happen.
So I work for an HR consulting firm, so I like absolutely value what you guys do, and I was really excited to see us bringing in outside consultants to kind of look at things and plan long-term, just to level set back a little bit. My understanding was that our HR department was doing this.
We are.
Okay, you are. So that's not being done by police officers right now?
No. So if I could answer that.
And fleet maintenance and IT, so I kind of thought we already had for those three particular positions.
Well, go ahead, Mike. I can speak to the HR, so I get involved in that. Sarah, our human resource specialist, is heavily involved in that, and, you know, up until recently, and maybe even still, Chief Grace has been or interfaced with the department. But, you know, that is, you know, and I think the chief maybe want to comment on that as well. I would say that about seventy percent of Sarah's time is spent on public safety issues.
But it's, so it's not being done, police officers aren't doing the IT work, like they said, the two firemen are doing the fleet maintenance.
Well, that's not entirely true. I mean, they do, they do some pieces of it, but the rest of the stuff, as far as grievance administration and dealing with those things, those things come over to us, but they still have to do the research.
Yeah. So I guess looking at it as a whole, that we already have these shared services groups, you know, that, that are helping out with IT, helping out with fleet maintenance, helping out with HR. Having someone dedicated to a particular department that only focuses on that department is just, you know, I know that there's people, there's certain areas that need a lot of that, but why are we not utilizing, or did we look at utilizing those shared groups that are already in place?
Well, again, what I, just as, and it's anecdotal, but on the flip side, like I said, when I was trying to get a hold of, at the time, lieutenant to talk to me about some of these issues we were trying to develop for you in the report, he's tied up or consumed on hiring people at that time. Okay, so if seventy percent of it is being done by town hall, it's pretty clear that there's a void that's occurring that could take, at the time, lieutenant's workload and allow him to focus on what he should be focusing on, and whether it's for the town, then fine, but it would add, certainly in our opinion, from what we were seeing, especially the uniqueness of the Gillette Stadium, where you have to hire so many people from outside agencies and coordinate all that.
So we are already doing pieces of that, then. That's what I'm struggling, is that we're saying we need an HR person because chief is getting in all these applications and, you know, tracking, I forget if you brought up the slide, kind of the stuff he's doing. I'm just trying to understand, is he doing that stuff today, and that's why we need to free him up, or is HR doing that stuff today?
It's probably best if we hear from the chief.
Yeah. And if you go, yeah, that, the managed resumes, applications, schedule, you know, write back to people and tell them they got the job or they didn't.
Backgrounds. We have one question going on right now, so I think we've got to kind of.
Well, that's, it's helpful just to back up to let us know where we are today.
Now, chief, you can handle it.
That's right.
All right. Let's start with HR. So HR currently, we utilize the town's resources when we hire a new employee, and they do a lot of the work for the civil service, and they get the applications and they get the lists, and then it comes to the police department. At that point, essentially, then the police department has to take over in regards to setting up the background checks, setting up the interviews, doing all, getting the whole list, and doing these full investigative, in-depth interviews and backgrounds. So that is all on the police departments. We assign an investigator to each candidate as we go through each one. It takes a lot of time. We have to send these detectives out on field trips to all the different jobs that they've ever worked. We interview neighbors. So that is all time that is spent from the police department in order to do that, that I'm not quite sure a civilian would be able to do that part, especially some of the Cory stuff and some of the background information that is required.
But that's interesting to know, like, that would never cross my mind, is everything that goes into, you know, hiring someone going.
Yeah, so if we look at, if we're hiring, like, say, for the civil service list, we're looking at three, then we have to look at three times two plus one, so now we're looking at the top seven. So we'll have to do a preliminary background to see if there's any candidates who potentially might have, just by a background check, automatically do not qualify, and then we have to start the full process, going through each one, one by one, setting up the backgrounds, putting a team together to do the backgrounds, not just for the investigator, because what happens is the investigator has a full packet, has a full application, it's about forty-two pages long, and we find everything out we can about these people, and then they make a recommendation to the hiring authority or to the chief, but we also have a peer interview process to interview them as well. So it's pretty involved, it's extremely time-consuming.
And are they outsourced, like, companies that do kind of that level of investigative stuff on candidates, or is it really each police department that you see is doing that themselves?
I mean, they can be outsourced, but generally, like, we Well, I mean, they can be outsourced, but generally, like, we do a lot of backgrounds.
Everyone's doing it themselves.
But generally, it's police departments. And then you've got, after the hire is made, you've got the whole onboarding process. So, they're onboarded at the town, so I'm sure they spend some time with your HR director doing the town stuff. But then they go to the PD, and that's, that's where the real onboarding begins. It could be people that have to be shepherded through the academy. You've got the FTO process and all the documentation.
Well, I haven't got to that part. Once we have a selected candidate.
I was just helping you out.
Then we have to line up all the medical appointments, psychological backgrounds, we have to review all those, then we have to then get them approved to do a PAT test. So, we have to make all these arrangements. We have to run them through a practice, then they actually have to pass. If they don't pass, we have to give them up to four weeks to re-qualify. And once they do that, we also have to be at the same time running the online application through the state MPTC academies, who will not accept an employee, except on, until they've finished everything. So, these academies are all over the state, they're few and far, and if they fill up, you're, you're six months, you've lost your window, there's no other academies. We're, we're hiring three right now, we started in August, and we just got them into the academy. So, I have a sergeant, I've had a detective assigned to this on a regular basis, making sure they're getting in, following up with them, making sure we got all their information, and making sure that they can get in. Then we start the orientation process of actually introducing them what's expected in the academy, and the academy will do an orientation, and then we get into the, what's required contractually for us to provide for them, for their equipment, if they need an LTC, we got to do that, we got to get a weapon for them, and then we got to get them off to the store, we got to get all their, size them off their equipment, and build their schedule for them as the process begins.
So, just coordinating all of those things is a draw.
I mean, yeah, that's helpful. No, I didn't even realize that level of.
We just do a very small piece of the, of the whole process.
That seems like that can't be outsourced, that it has to be.
No, because they work directly with the police department to do that. So, this is where a lot of our, our admin time just gets sucked up.
But, an admin or a civilian could be setting up those appointments and kind of after the interviews.
Absolutely.
And also doing that with the fire department or someone else down here at town hall.
I think it's the coordination of all of those things, making sure that all the boxes get checked off, making sure that, you know, those investigative teams are set up, just the, the amount of administration, administrative time it takes to work a candidate through that, now multiply that times a few, and then, then you multiply it times all the dozens of officers that you may have that come in for a special event, which are treated as...
Well, that's totally separate. Hold on, before we get to there.
All right.
We haven't even got the, the recruit out of the academy yet. So, now we have to get officers trained in the FTO program, which is a two-week training that they get trained around the state. Then we develop a 16-week FTO program where the officer, the new officer works with the FTO. Every single day they're assigned, they're never on their own, for four months, and there's a review after every shift and after every week. And that's reviewed by a supervisor to make sure that we're training them on all of the operations of the department, getting all the certifications, that they understand the record management system. So, that way, when they finally get out on their own, they at least have a platform of success. Because at the, and, and sometimes if someone's needed, we extend it to make sure that we put the best candidate out there. So, that's just, now, when we start about the stadium, we're not essentially hiring new employees, even though they do.
But you're managing the employees.
It is. We, so, here we are, we are on Tuesday, we have an event coming this, this Sunday, a football game. So, now we start, essentially, we have to, Lieutenant Noonan oversees the stadium stuff, that's it, he's done for the week. So, he starts building the model, he starts working with the JTTF, the FBI, the state police, everybody to start building what we're in for, for this week. We start doing our all-agency meetings, and we start then reaching out to our partners of all the different resources that we're going to require. We put our feelers out there, they give us back their resources, and then we have to put this puzzle together, because they don't always send us the same thing. So, then we have to go to different resources, and we start building the entire platform for Sunday's game. It's never the same, the players are not always the same, and that goes on all week. We also utilize an online reply system that one of our administrative assistants, when, when payroll gets done on Monday, well, now Tuesday, she assists with taking in these names and stop plugging them into the templates. And that gets revised probably, probably four or five times, because offices or departments commit to this, and then they turn out that they can't show up, or there's a need for some of the SWAT offices somewhere else in the state. So, every single week, we lose all those, all those offices to, to make sure that we provide the best service to the community and to, into Gillette Stadium. So, I don't know, so when we talk about...
The points being, the points being made, though, regarding the resources that you could, could assist you in taking care of all of that.
And the numbers we're talking, there's almost 200 offices. So, just think of all the different roles and, and places they have to be assigned, so there's a, there's a workflow from start to finish on a, you know, in a 16-hour event. That, we're essentially staffed as a regular police department, but then we have to turn into a city, right, often, all the time. So, yes, there, there's definitely a draw on the Foxborough Police Department.
That's helpful to see how much is involved there, because that's a lot.
I have more, we can go on. I'm trying to give you the Cliff Notes.
That's amazing.
So, when we talk about the hiring for the stadium part, that's essentially that role.
It's a whole different place.
Yeah, and every event is different. So, when we go into concerts, we have to work with the promoters, we have to find past history, where, where was the event before? What did we see? What was the, the trends? And we have to adjust our models, so we, we make sure that we meet the needs of the clientele's that may be coming in, the age groups and stuff like that. The football, depending on, you know, we anticipate a win this Sunday. But as the playoff games come, and, you know, we have different guests who attend, sometimes very popular people like to show up, and they require additional resources from us, so...
And on top of that, they maintain a, maintain a very high standard. It's probably one of the highest standards in all the NFL.
Yes, as in, in the last assessment, we were number one rated in the country, so. And then we have to partner all of our model with our other law enforcement agencies, with the state police, and we mix and we talk, and we, we have all of our operation plans that are mixed, and we're both aware of them with a unified command, and that grows too, as we have different commanders in different spots.
And that's what drives me to the comment, that, you know, in normal circumstances, this would be a good department. In the present circumstances...
It would be, it is a good department.
Yeah. I'm getting...
This thing, Ethel Point's a great department.
Under the circumstances you have here, they're a remarkable department, for what they do with the, with the people that they have. And we're just, and, and, you know, this part of the study allowed us to look at ways we could enhance that by taking some of the load off of the sworn people that just, it's not, none of us, I'm a retired police chief, I didn't want to be an administrator, that wasn't, you know, Dave, Sean, we're all police chiefs. None of us wanted to do that administrative piece that has nothing to do with police work, but we had to do it as we got promoted and ranked. Somebody always, IT stuff always falls back on somebody. And, you know, were you doing the IT stuff when we interviewed you? Were you heavy into the IT?
I do that, too.
So, now, the chief is going to have to do DIT stuff.
Well, we've, we've built some, if we follow, hold on, let's just expand a little farther.
Trying to get people for you, just so you can point out.
So, if we get, if we get to the end of the vent, that's not the end of the event, because everything that's occurred, we have jurisdiction on. So, every single crime, we have to do the follow-ups on. So, we have to take our detective division, and depending on, and, and, you know, we always hope for the best, but sometimes there's some serious crimes and sexual assaults, there's assaults with serious injuries, that now we're responsible for every single crime that occurs with 72,000 people. So, then we have to take that, and then we have to expand not just the investigation of every one of those crimes, we also are ultimately in charge of the prosecution of every single one of those charges. So, then we have to take all of the requirements to make sure we get everything to the DA's office, and then we have to make sure that we have all of the witnesses and all of the officers who are on scene, make sure that they're there to prosecute these cases, that some of them drag on for two years plus.
Some of those cases involve issues of mental health, where we think, where we see the value of a social worker, so that they don't have to assign a detective to work with this person, really has a, a mental health issue, and you might see him again next week or the week after that, you know, the next event. And we, so, all of these things, you can see, they kind of blend together, except for maybe the mechanic, that's, that's not really involved with this part of the operation, but all those other pieces we see is kind of coming together.
Conversations I've had with chiefs around the state recently have indicated that, that this is the number-one issue facing police departments is mental health, because there just aren't the resources available to manage it on a day-to-day basis.
So much time, takes so much time, and the recidivism rate is so high. If you see him once, you're going to see him a dozen more times, that same person. So, we are chipping away at probably getting 25% of the department CIT-trained to how to de-escalate some of these situations. That's a 40-hour training, and I will tell you, that's basically taking the officer off the road, and we're funding it through overtime, because that's all, that's, that's how we got to pay them, because we don't have the extra manpower. But this is a trend that we're seeing in law enforcement, and it's definitely something that, addressing it in the moment is one thing, but the long-term follow-ups and getting the resources is where we, we see the gaps of how we can have that person reach out to family members, reach out to friends, reach out to neighbors, reach out to this person, and provide that continuous service, and with the primary care is that follow-up, so we can avoid some tragedies potentially. I can't say it any better.
So, couple of things. Leah stole my, one of my questions, I had the same, same concerns. When, when you looked at both the police and fire, did you take into account the shared townwide services that are available? Or you just strictly focused on, on police and fire as, as separate departments in, in their entirety?
Our task was to focus on the police and fire, but being in municipal government already, we all realize that there is, there is an opportunity for sharing within the government as a whole, and that's what we would expect, that you would see that also in the management.
So, going back to Chief Grace's explanation of things, 95% of that can't be done by a civilian, or what you just described.
Which part?
All of it.
A lot of it can't be done.
I, I think I'd say it's, it's a, it's a lower percentage than, than 95, though. And, and I think that coordinating it, shepherding it, and doing those things that don't have to be done by a sworn officer, and when you consider the police and fire department together, that's where you get the volume that I think that, that justifies that position.
I mean, I don't know what you explained at the stadium, I don't, I don't see how much of that could be done by a civilian.
Some of it can definitely be done by a civilian. We, we use one of our administrative assistants, Lee McCaffey, for pulling these templates in and reaching out to these departments and getting that data and pulling it in, but at the end of the day, once we get it all...
You still need to touch it, you still need to feel it.
The officers have to get in there, and, and they got to look at the model, and, so, yes, but getting new people, every time we have a, a new department hires a new officer, well, then they, they have to get sworn in. So, now we need another tax form, so now we got to create a new ID. So, every single, I mean, our, our database, if you look at employees, someone looks and goes, are you like Boston PD? Because we have so many names, because every time, we could have three or four new names on every event. So, that, we have to create new employees, we have to reach out to payroll, and we have to create, you know, new employee codes, new employee numbers, almost on every single event, which we do push, civilians help us greatly in that.
If, if I'm not mistaken, when we were here in like 2016, whenever we did that other study, it's my understanding that when you have officers from other departments working these events, they're actually working as Foxborough police officers.
The majority of them are, the...
So, so those people are your employees for that event? And that's, that's a really significant thing to remember. So, you own those people for liability, for training, for all those things that really kind of need to be tracked to some degree and overseen. Each one of those people has a personnel file.
Like they should have a code of conduct.
At the PD.
They should have everything.
You own them.
Yeah, just like anyone else.
And, and we identified that in the previous study. So, and a lot of, you know, the other model is that you're, you're hiring them as outside details, and you're paying those other agencies, but to think that these are actually your employees, you own it. And that, that's why we think that that can take a significant commitment, administrative commitment to tracking all of that, tracking, maintaining those files.
Yeah, like the arrest files, all the use-of-force reports, every single one after every single event has to be vetted, approved, looked at, and made sure they were investigated fully, because at the end of the day, the town of Foxborough is the one responsible for every single arrest that occurs up there, and every single incident that happens up there. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a big, it's a big, it's a lot of work.
Looks like a lot more now than managing resumes and sending correspondence.
Yes. Well, we haven't talked about, we have still more things we got to talk about. Should we talk about them?
Talk about anything you want, you're chief now.
Yeah. Well, I'll just wait for the questions, how's that?
Go over a couple of the highlights of the things.
Well, some of the things are, they talked about analysts and an evidence, social worker, domestic violence. So, some of those, the social work and the domestic violence roles within the department, there, a lot of them are the follow-up support that takes hours and hours and resources. And I, and I think Dave talked about using other resources in town and maybe utilizing them. The problem is, a lot of these happen after four o'clock and on Saturday and Sunday. So, we have made a lot of growth in, in reaching out to New Hope and Riverside, and Riverside now offers on-scene crisis counseling to us that we can bring to people, and we can, and essentially we'll tie up offices for hours. But that's crisis intervention, it's not follow-up. The follow-up needs to happen the next day, the Mondays and the Tuesdays and the Wednesdays and the next week, that police officers don't always can get to. So, there is a role for following up on domestic violence victims as well as the mental health issues, because it's massively time-consuming managing it and making sure resources are brought to the people who need it. When we talked about the evidence role and the civilian role, our evidence officer, he's an administrative officer, that's not his only role. So, I think I've done a pretty, pretty impressive job with making sure that he has a full day. I know he does, he's like, I didn't get lunch today, so it's always a little joke, but he's also my armor, my firearms instructor, he's my breathalyzer certifier, he does all those every single year. He does all the, the background checks for all the people who want to go around and go door-to-door. He's my sex offender registry officer who does all the interviews, he's also the backup court officer, so, and a variety of other things that he does. So, he's going all the time. So, evidence is, is a, is a major portion, because I, I only have one person doing it, and, and that's it, it's only, and he's, he's a go-to guy, so. But he also is running around to the crime lab, but chain of custody is very important, and who's going and who's touching that stuff. So, we keep it all underneath one police officer, and we do our audits monthly, quarterly, and yearly on, on that stuff. One thing that is, I, I consider one of the biggest trends in policing right now is analysts, and how that we're taking data and what we're doing it to be proactive, not reactive in law enforcement. The, the RMS system that the police department offers is capturing the data, it's capturing it. Our new Semrec operation is doing a fantastic job. I mean, it's hard to believe, but we're capturing, we're, our call volume is over five, almost 6,000 more already. We're pushing 30,000, we haven't even got to the end of the year. Last year, we were 24,000. So, we're doing a better job at capturing our calls, because we have professional dispatches who are actually bringing it all in and logging it. But the analyst is taking the data, and how do we use it? How do we get that data out onto like a dashboard? How do we get it out to the residents? How do they be able to go on a website and say, hey, there are any crimes in my neighborhood? Getting that data, getting the crash reports, and having that data available weekly and monthly is critical to law enforcement, otherwise we're just, we're, we're behind the times. And you'll see that in many different departments, and that usually historically is a civilian, because that's what they do for a living. But does Foxborough need a analyst every single day? No. I think that's something that could be regionalized, it could be a multi-town position where different, where towns use the same RMS system, because once you build your models, you can push it out on a regular basis. So, that's, that's one thing that I see.
Could that potentially be a Semrec position?
It very well could be. They're not there yet, because they're not the four towns yet. And eventually, I don't know if they can fund it, or it's something, we can pay a portion of it, but, and it's, maybe it's something that could be outsourced to a, to someone who does it part-time. A lot of this stuff, they just, they just remote access in, they can pull it all out, and they can generate anything you want, anytime with the data. It's just a matter of training a police officer to do that job, in my opinion, they can't keep up with the times, just like with the IT. A police officer can't be an IT director. The IT department that the town of Foxborough has is civilians, and we've given them the administrative rights to come in and the CGS rights to access our data, and we have a help ticket system that we're, we're probably crushing Aaron with all the requests and the help tickets, because they're supposed to be helping us, but they're running us. running us. And that, and that civilian, um, agency already in town has been unbelievable, but I know that we're wearing on a little bit, just because the, um, the technology is ever-changing and the demands from the state that keep coming up every single, like the registry just changed vendors. You can't imagine what that does to us, and trying to convert all the data and making it all work. It, it's unbelievable. Our RMS system will do an update every two weeks. We have to update every single computer and then we have to du, update all the terminals. You know, we're just, it's constant, constant change. We gotta get to Windows 10 by the end of the year. We're under the gun, I don't even think we've ordered the computers yet. So we're trying.
And that's the kind of thing, though, that I would, would not think would fall on the police department, like Windows 10, I would think would fall.
No, so we have, we, but we used to.
Yeah, okay.
When we started, probably in 2016, we had a, we had a police officer trying to do this. It's unimaginable, they can't, they can't do it.
We've made some of those changes.
Yes, so we've made some of the good changes, but those are civilian positions.
I think Windows 10s are not supported anymore, so.
And, and the, the point isn't that, you know, you have to go out and do all of these positions right away. But this was a forward-thinking, um, study to be looking down the road. I like, you know, what I hear from the chief about maybe, you know, regionalizing to some degree, um, that the, um, the analyst position, I, I think that that's a great thought, and I think that there is probably, uh, you need to establish some priorities as a group for where you wanna move forward and fund, you know, fund some of these positions, um, even if they're part-time to begin with. But we think that within a couple of years, um, this, this will be critical to you, it's like, pay the money to, to pay, to add police officers that, um, you know, might be doing these administrative things, or you could pay for some civilian administrators and not, maybe not have to hire as many, uh, police officers to do things that can be done by civilians.
So Alan Reed's is a very good, good point, that, um, it's something really, the approach that we've taken with IT, where, you know, before we used to have a couple people just run an IT for, and then spread out all over town. Now we have a dedicated operation for IT. We, we never used to have a central maintenance operation. Well, and, and before each building, each building person, each person or department had would be in cha, in charge of their own maintenance. Well, none of us were experts in that, so we hired people that finally, we created an operation that, that maintains the buildings in a much better condition than they've ever been maintained. So it's pay me now, pay me later. Now, granted, note, and the purpose of the study was not to say, "Look, we need to hire all these people now." The idea was to take a look at what the things that are starting to emerge as issues that we need to start looking at, and see how we can maybe direct those issues and direct resources into the future, as to how we can start addressing things in a proactive way. But, um, yeah, this was clearly intended to, to start taking a look at those things and say, "Yeah, these are things that we have concerns about today, and they're gonna just continue to develop over time."
Yeah, I'd like to, if everybody's comfortable right now, let's, let's get the fire side up and running and, and see how we can, uh, roll this all together.
Okay. Brian, you're...
Thanks.
You're gonna do it here, Brian?
What?
You're gonna do it there?
Yeah.
Give him a break.
So, good evening, I'm Brian Duggan, and as Alan mentioned, I'm Director of Fire Services for MRI. Um, I completed a 35-year career in the Massachusetts Fire Service, serving as 28 years as chief in two different Massachusetts communities. And really the thing I specialized in during that entire time was the management of surge events, uh, to the point that I had written several papers on that, as well as participated in the management of the Massachusetts State Fire Mobilization Plan. So sort of particularly appropriate to Foxborough. In looking at this project, uh, we brought in a team of three other practitioners, Bob Craig, Pat Purcell, and Peter Finley, who assisted me in the process, and, uh, crafted this again as a forward-looking, uh, opportunity. So a lot of times we go into a community and we're sort of in there because of a crisis, whether it's a fire or EMS-related crisis, an organizational crisis of sometime, some type. So this is sort of a breath of fresh air to take the manager's inspiration and look forward into what's the future. And, and to do that, we focused on service level. So each community will define its own service level, especially for fire and EMS, the number of fire units, response times, deployment patterns, and in essence, that manages a level of risk. And in this particular study, what we are looking at is the long-term development of organizational capacity to retain the service level as we look forward. So we, we've done more than 165 fire service studies over about 20 years, uh, and with that, we've seen sort of the good, the bad, and the ugly. Fortunately, I stand here before you with Foxborough as not only the good, but really the great, uh, standing as one of the top five organizations that we have conducted an organizational assessment of. So a really well-managed, well-functional fire and EMS re-agency, typically referred to as a fire rescue agency. In our reports, we refer to a lot of things as industry best practice. And there were six things in particular here that struck us, as these are sort of practices that are already in place, things that are being brought forward, that really make this a remarkable organization. Uh, the first one is leadership. We clearly saw that the command staff from sort of company officer on up through the chief are engaged, positive, looking forward, and really focusing on the needs of the community, not only now, but in recognition of surge capacity and in recognition of what incident trends are, how they're gonna continue to maintain that service level that I discussed. Innovation, we, we saw innovation throughout the department. Uh, and as I think Alan mentioned, what makes sort of the police department remarkable is how they can do things with the level of resource they currently have. The same applies to the fire department, and it's bringing innovation and change forward. A lot of fire departments, we, we say it's sort of 200 years of tradition and very little change. This department sort of embraces change and leadership pushes forward change, and that's what makes things actually function to the level that they do today. Use of technology, um, so we go to a lot of departments, uh, the police chief talked about an RMS system, records management system. On the fire side, there's a lot of opportunity for gathering data from the fire prevention process, from inspections, but then what happens to that data? Is it put into pre-planned, so when an emergency incident occurs, it can actually be used? How are units sort of dispatched and alerted? These things, we found that you have an RMS system, you have a, a state-of-the-art alerting system, and that they are fully used to the extent of the capacity. Most times, if we find 10%, 20% use of what's possible, uh, that's about the average that we find. To find an organization that has taken it to the other side and uses it to 90 to 100% of its true capacity and participates in the ongoing development of those products is really exceptional. Organizational policy, um, that's something that really drives operations. And, uh, the department has taken sort of an industry best practice and sort of focused on development of policy, cloud-based, uh, access to that, and, and things that we found, a lot of times people will go on the internet, they'll pull a, a book of policies down, but they're not customized, and yes, there's a book of policies, but they really aren't used. Just the opposite here, they're customized and they are used and embraced by their people. And finally, uh, well, two things, community EMS, that's something just developing in the fire service today. So if you went to a Massachusetts Fire Chiefs meeting, you'd hear a lot of conversation about the development of community paramedicine, community EMS, bringing sort of services into the community and taking the burden off some of the healthcare system. Uh, in, in a way, it sort of links into some of the behavioral and mental issues that Alan had alluded to that need the social worker on the other side. So, this is a difference. A lot of times it's talked about, rarely it's acted upon. Here, it is being acted upon. And finally, there's a proactive use of automatic aid and mutual aid. So when there's a fire, typically a single-room residential structure fire, it requires 14 to 17 people to safely extinguish that fire, far more than you have the capacity or budget to support. But through automatic aid and mutual aid, those numbers are reached so that there's a safe environment and a best possible outcome. So those are some of the best practices and, and something that I think the community as a whole should really look at the department and be proud of. One of the consistent things we saw is certainly there's the surge demands of the stadium and events and everything that's entailed with that, but there's also an increasing service level demand day-to-day. And an elongated response time that we see trending toward higher levels than, than we've seen in other organizations. So for example, there's close to 10 calls per day. Um, I used to work for a mayor who said firefighters travel in herds, and, and that's very true because firefighting and EMS is a team-based, uh, sport. So whether it's a cardiac arrest that requires the services of an engine company and ambulance, as well as the police department, uh, or it's a structure fire that requires not only the services of the local fire department, but sort of a quasi-regional approach to that, uh, those calls require a number of people. And typically, depending on where patients are transported to and the nature of event, can take up to two hours on average, uh, per event. So that workload, you have multiple people engaged for periods of time that can be very short in some cases and quite elongated in others, but, uh, the trend is there that that is averaging up. So what we've seen is 33% of your response times are over six minutes at this point. We anticipate that based on complexity of traffic, increasing population, more events being scheduled, that that will increase. And if we look at six minutes and above, given that sort of some of the, the national standards for emergency medical response are four to six minutes, uh, to really have the best patient outcomes, we're at 50% right now are six minutes and above. So certainly, based on the traffic complexity and not only those things, but there's a 26% number of calls where more than one call is occurring at a time. So you may have two calls going on in the community, or three calls in some cases. Uh, so elongated response times are really expected and increasing. In terms of deployment, there's, there's a clear need for a substation, and certainly the, the chief has a plan for that in the long-term. Uh, we're suggesting that the community really needs to get behind that and support it, that by deploying, not sort of hiring extra people from the start, but redeploying some resources, that you're gonna reduce your response time and maximize the deployment of resources so that your response times, uh, do reduce. So one of the things we typically do is comparative analysis or benchmarking between communities. That does, it provides you a perspective in time. It's a snapshot, it's not the be-all and end-all. And one of our concerns when we talked about Foxborough is the uniqueness of the community, especially with the stadium and the number of events. So we worked with the manager, with the chief, to try and identify communities that would be most similar. However, even though it's a peer-based perspective, we think it's conservative based on the unique nature of Foxborough. But it certainly does sort of tell a story, and I'll go through some of that, that if you look at just the base population of Foxborough compared to the four other communities selected, uh, it, Foxborough is at 94%. Land area, Foxborough is slightly larger. All of the agencies selected provide both fire and EMS services, so they're truly fire rescue organizations. And, uh, most have two fire stations, Foxborough has one. So it certainly backs up our contention that this is the time to start looking to the future and planning for a new deployment model with the development of a second station. Now certainly a second station is not as large as the headquarters facility, uh, we're envisioning sort of a smaller two-bay station where you'd have an initial, uh, response out of that. So a number of people assigned to shift and certainly, resources ultimately relate to service level. Uh, but the average is 10 people on shift, Foxborough's at eight or 82% of the average. Again, we think this is quite conservative, given sort of the infrastructure involved within the community. Uh, and in terms of day staff, uh, those are the people, an EMS coordinator, a training officer, some of the, the administrative things that we talked about on the police side. On the fire side, the average is five positions. Here, there are three, and I, I can remember sort of as we did our field visits, trying to get time with some of the command staff to talk about some of these issues, they were busy trying to accomplish them and could barely afford the time that we needed to interview them. Uh, and that's sort of separate and distinct from managing the surge events associated with the stadium. Let's see, I'm gonna jump ahead, I jumped over that. So in terms of how similar or how different are they, we, we listed out what's the unique infrastructure. Each community does have unique infrastructure, has some limited access highways, but certainly, I don't think that a Speedway is equal to Gillette Stadium, or that having one limited access highway is equal to four. So I, I think that's where we come across with the idea that even though everything here is presented as truly a snapshot for you to consider, it's a conservative snapshot based on what we're presented. And in total, when we look at emergency call volume, when we look at the average, Foxborough is right now at 99%, so pretty close to the average, but we envision five years from now will be well above that average. So when we talk about fire services and level of service, we also get into your managing risk. So the more resources you have theoretically, the less risk, the, the better patient outcomes, the more, uh, fire suppression you're gonna do, the more other services to prevent fires and so forth you're gonna have in place. But things that, that we saw consistently for levels of risk, there's a universal feeling within the organization that sort of there are two masters. The, the community is obviously the primary master and focus, but certainly the stadium is in some cases of equal stature. And I think that's consistent with some of the things we heard on the police side, that uh, when you have the equivalent of a full-time employee's yearly hours put into planning for an event, that not only applies on the police side, but applies on the fire side as well. So we see overall is a diminishing service level, or the potential for a diminishing service level if resources aren't added to the organization. Uh, and will, we see that there will be a continuation of increasing response times if the deployment model isn't changed, and there are some modest adjustments in, in the number of staff. Uh, and sort of with that comes the aspect of support. Having a dedicated training officer, rather than having that as an ancillary duty, having a dedicated EMS coordinator and some of the, the positions there that are essential to support the critical functions. So, we wrote a strategic plan that looks out sort of toward the future. Uh, and with that, it considers what are timed actions that are within the fiscal ability of the community to maintain the service level that's there. Uh, it develops appropriate organizational support and really places Foxborough in a position for not only retaining the service level, but retaining operational safety on the fire ground or emergency medical scene. And that is an overall quick summary. Again, the strategic plan is about three pages in length, I listed the pages, I think it was 60...
Three to 66.
63 to 66, and that provides you a little bit more depth on that. Uh, and be happy to answer any questions and...
Questions, Mike, you wanna, Chief, come up too? Any questions from the board?
Uh, Mike, I'm sure that you've been planning prior administration for a substation. Based on your run analysis, have you got some potential locations that it would meet both the community need as well as fire service?
Uh, yes, actually, we were fortunate, um, about two years ago? We worked with the state legislature to acquire a piece of land on Route 140, just past the Shell Station across from the Mass DOT garage, which that, that, you know, just looking at the, the run volume and looking at where we're going, our, our ability to access the highways, especially Route 495's, difficult. Um, it seemed like a pretty good place, you could ask, access South Foxborough, you could access East Foxborough. Recently Mansfield moved their fire station from their geographic center out to East Mansfield. They, they provided a lot of backup in that area. They provided a lot of backup in that area, and now that's gone. So, yeah, so absolutely, this is something we've certainly been thinking about, but it's good to have it vetted through, you know, another group of experts to identify that that is an appropriate place and look at the... We did what, three or four-year history of response times, and, you know, we did some heat mapping of where the incidents occur. So it's pretty good to vet that through these guys.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I don't think I've ever left the board as elected speechless before, so you're going to ask me at least one question.
No, there's a lot of material here. So just taking it all in, trying to digest it.
And I don't think we have the PowerPoints. We have the other stuff, but that, you know, if you do release those, it could be good to have the PowerPoints you guys presented with the other materials, just because it does kind of summarize it.
Yeah, they just came in today, yeah, so we just, we'll get those to you.
I think a lot of those charts are already in the report as well, but certainly, Bill has the PowerPoint today, so he can distribute that. And we don't just go away. So, you know, if Bill, if the chiefs have any questions for us, all they have to do is make a phone call or shoot us an email. You know, we just, you know, we're the gift that keeps on giving. So don't hesitate to call us if we can, if we can help you with anything.
Appreciate that, thanks. So, Mike, Chief Kelleherp, so could you maybe identify, speak to a couple of the issues that Brian has raised, and perhaps elaborate a little further based upon your experience and, you know, and certainly, the assistant chief as well, you know? If you want to have some thoughts on that as well.
Absolutely. I think, you know, it's, I mean, traffic's an issue, I think that we've all seen, but, you know, it was kind of, it was enlightening to see that the response time, you know, the benchmark of six minutes or greater, 50% of the time, that's, that we need to improve that, that we need to take steps to improve that, that's an important...
And that's not normal in other similar communities, whether it be Westboro, Mass, Sacol, Maine, when we've looked at response times, the response times aren't as high as they were here.
So, and that wasn't just, that was a three or four-year, you know, snapshot. So, yeah, we definitely need to, need to look at that and evaluate that. I think, I mean, one of the, one of the things we do really well is we're very efficient. We do, you know, the rank and file are very good at making sure that they, you know, become available as soon as possible to respond on the next call, because it seems like, you know, the, one of the issues we have is the transport time to Norwood Hospital, Sturdy Hospital, and, you know, Boston is definitely a driver of our availability, so...
Chief, since we've started CEMREC in the public safety, are you seeing response times decrease a little bit? You're saving that minute or minute and a half where it's not being, the 911 calls aren't being, going through Framingham, coming straight to you guys.
Yeah, we're certainly seeing a, an increase in the processing, because they're not going out to Framingham and then coming back. We're getting those directly now. But we've instituted a pretty robust emergency medical dispatch program, which we're gathering more information ahead of time, so we can try to, like I said, like, we're always efficient, we're always really, you know, continuous quality improvement. What we're trying to do is identify the calls that, you know, everybody always asks me, why do we send the engine with the ambulance, you know? We're really trying to, you know, drill down into what the issue is. If someone's got a bloody nose, we just send the ambulance. If somebody's in cardiac arrest, we send, you know, six people instead of, you know, two people. So really, you know, it used to be like, one call got the same response all the time. We're really trying to focus in on, you know, what do we do, what are we responding to, and then, you know, what's the appropriate level of response? So that's one of the things that CEMREC has brought, is, you know, we're gathering that information, we're using a pretty sophisticated software that was purchased by CEMREC to look at all those calls and then identify, you know, which ones need, need a, you know, robust response, and then which ones need just an ambulance. So that's part of the process.
And the training of that personnel to be able to give you the dispatch personnel...
Exactly. Absolutely, yeah, it's very, like I said, we're continuously improving the system. We're working with Chief Grace and the police department right now, so a lot of times, they are calling for our services. If they're on a detailed Patriot Place, someone passes out, someone, you know, someone falls off a curb, things like that, trying to get information, you know, there's a, again, distinct difference between, you know, somebody in cardiac arrest and someone that's had a little too much to drink. So we try to like, you know, gain as much information as possible in a consistent manner. That's one of the big things, it's very consistent in how the, you know, the information is gathered. So we're going to work with, you know, our partners, our agency partners, and how we get that information, and then again, respond appropriately. So it's, you know, it's...
Couple of things that we saw is more than 25% of the time, your resources are divided in two different directions, meaning there are multiple calls going on. But if you consider that that cardiac arrest the chief mentioned consumes about 80% of your on-duty resources initially, there's very little left for that second call sometimes.
First time I saw that was during graduation a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
Two, remember, two...
Oh, yeah.
Two calls, two minutes...
Yeah, they went two different directions.
Two different directions.
Yeah, so I think, yeah, going forward, I mean, there's things, there's definitely, I mean, our department is very, very, you know, keen of where alternative funding sources are, we're very aggressive in pursuing grants and, you know, doing different things like the EMS position in the community paramedicine, kind of tying that in with public health and using, you know, different funding mechanisms. I mean, we were able to provide that position essentially at no cost to the taxpayer and improve the service, we're working with our social workers. I, you know, some, another meeting, I'd love to bring in, you know, the Council on Aging and Pauline from the Health Department, and talk about the collaboration that's going on and some of the successes that we've had, because it's really, it's good. So I think, you know, with Eye to the Future, we can always, we're always willing to look at different ways to kind of meet the goal. So we're not really afraid of thinking outside the box or trying something different. But I think, you know, that's one example, that community EMS position is really very successful, and now a lot of people statewide are looking at it, I think. I mean, you kind of, you haven't seen anything like that around, have you?
No, and that's the difference that I said, between talking about it and being interested in it versus doing it.
And just one more thing, if I could, for, you know, just to step on a hornet's nest. Down the road, you know, it's sort of talking a little bit about that substation, and I know we purchased the land a couple of years ago, or got donated, swap. When would you like to see something like that happen? I know when it first came out, it was sort of like a 10-year down the road.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we started the process probably three years ago. We, you know, we worked with then-Senator Timmeltie, Representative Barrows, we, you know, started talking about it, and then, you know, the wheels of government moved slow, we were able to identify it, work with D-CAM and everything else, like that process took a little while. We still haven't fully secured it, because we...
We still have a few pieces to go on it.
We owe the state, we owe the state a piece here in Foxborough somewhere, so we need to work. So, yeah, I would, it depends, like, too, what's going on in Patriot Place, what that serves, you know? Ultimately, you know, when they commit to a development, what is the development? What are they going to, you know, healthcare obviously impacts us pretty greatly. They just opened another six-story building up there. I mean, that, you know, we do, I think, 180 calls to the current building a year, so, you know, depends on that, too, that's obviously... I mean, this study was done today with no development up there, so obviously, there's something coming. That's going to be, you know, that's obviously, we're going to have to evaluate what the occupancies are and, you know, do some strategic planning, you know, maybe through a mitigation process that could help offset the cost of a substation. I mean, that's obviously up to, up to the board and as those processes go forward.
One of the impetus, the impetus for the study, and I think it was Selectman Felber who raised the question about why we should do this, was that it was about 10 years ago when we first, when we did a similar type of review. And it's been 10 years, and think about how different Foxborough is just from 10 years. So this was a look into the future to see, you know, in the things that we know of today, there are things that we don't know of, that are going to continue to evolve and develop in the community. But, but I think there are a couple of things, a couple of takeaways from this. First is the fact that it's, you know, hats off to both our public safety operations for being one of the best in the business, and I say, I tell that to people, I'm very proud of that, this group, you know, and I say that wherever I go. But I tell, the reason I, I think it's important for us to take a step and look forward is the fact that we know there's going to be some significant changes in the coming years. And when that, that strain on service goes from a public safety response, when we fully develop, or nearly fully developed in the area up on Route 1, that's going to create more strain in terms of sending the department in that direction without having the need, having the fully-developed resources in the other side of town. And so that's why it's important for us to secure land, and to also then talk about what that might take to develop that parcel on this end of town. So all the more reason to have this kind of conversation. But again, these are things that we have to think about, because we have to be worried about what's going to be happening in the years to come. And we know that the growth is going to happen, that just, because if you look back 10 years, we're a lot different place than we were 10 years ago.
Well, I appreciate everybody's input. It certainly is a wake-up call. I'm surprised either you chiefs or your command staff can do anything other than see your families every once in a while, and, but you guys are doing a great job. Good to see that, you know, kudos to both of you, being certainly the number-one venue in the, in the country is, is pretty huge, and being so advanced and forward-thinking on the fire side is outstanding. Thank you.
It's still a lot of fun.
And thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Grab my thumb drive.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Brian. All right, thank you, good to see you.
Selectman's update. I just want to reiterate on Veterans Day, what a great job Ally did and Lisa. You know, it was sort of like a right-hand turn, and I think, those of you that weren't there, first of all, the auditorium was three-quarters full, a lot of people there. I couldn't, I came a little late, couldn't find a parking spot. And the band did an outstanding job, they were a lot of fun. The swing music was sort of a little, you know, retro, but, and then there was young John Mitchell that did an outstanding job, and who knew he could sing?
Yeah, yeah, good.
They all did a, did a great job, and Ally did a great job, and it was fun doing, giving something like that back to the vets in the community. They did a great job.
Just one thing that I wanted to mention, which it just, it just was accidentally overlooked yesterday, but Lisa was also a veteran herself.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I know most people don't realize it, but this, but our veterans' office is the only veteran service office in the entire state that's run by two women, and they're both veterans. So, and that's really, says a lot for both of them, and they did, both did a terrific job yesterday, and Ally did a great job incorporating both, both folks into, into the...
Much better job than our last veterans'.
You know, when they...
I was rubbing him on the arm, saying, you know, kind of a good job she's doing here, you know?
Actually, if you notice, when, when the Navy guy left, it took two Army folks to recover, so just saying.
Because that was pretty kind of cool, too, when, at the end, when they did all the theme songs to the veterans that were in those branches who stood up. It was really kind of cool during each of that, too, and did notice that you stood up for the Navy.
Did. We had one Coast Guard...
Two, actually, two.
Oh, I couldn't see anybody from where...
So Mr. Green from the planning department, the planning board, I didn't see the second one.
So, that's all. Have anybody else, have anything else? All right, great. Phil?
Okay, so a couple of things I wanted to touch upon is that tomorrow night, we have a, the housing seminar, which will be held, the housing forum will be held here in this room, starting at 7:00 tomorrow night, from 7:00 to 8:30. And there are some, a lot of folks have been invited by invitation to come to this. So it's going to be a pretty good, pretty good discussion about housing, strictly about housing. If anybody's seen the, the displays that've been in the hallways in Town Hall, it certainly has, is a bit of an eye-opener for folks, and it's clearly a number-one issue on a lot of people's minds. So important to have that conversation tomorrow night. Next Wednesday, I would like to have another follow-up meeting, but I don't know, I know it's short notice, but, but take a look at the calendar, and November is disappearing quickly, and in light of the fact that we have two holidays in the mix of, we just had one, and there's another one coming up on Thanksgiving, it really does put a crimp into our budget process. So I want to try and get one more meeting together with everybody that we had from the housing, from the financial summit, to try and talk a little bit more about budget goals and budget priorities for next year, so that we can, I can then give the instructions to everybody to start forming their budgets. And that clock really starts to tick fast in December. So we need to do, find the time, and I'll throw out a couple more dates, and then see how that works with, with schedules from the ICOM, this board, and, and the school committee as well. But I really would like to get one more forum there, so we can get some, some collective input, and do some budget, some financial forecasting as well, which George has been working on. So I'll try and work on that and get that, that out to you. One of the things that's not in your packet tonight, in your, in your list of things tonight, is the list of action items is, this came in late Friday, and unfortunately, it was not realized that the, that the agenda had to be done by Thursday because of the holiday yesterday. So, but this is the annual Light Up the Town event that occurs every year in the town, and it's put on by the Fox Recreation Department, Recreation Department, and they would like to get approval of this tonight, so I would ask that the board take that into consideration tonight under, under, under your action items, if you, if you would. So I'll give you that for consideration. And I do have the actual schedule, which I'll send to you tomorrow, but the proposed schedule, George and I worked on this today, to try and nail down the proposed schedule for, for the budget cycle for this year, and so we can get going on that. Obviously, George and I are working on this as a new process this year. Next meeting, you'll be having the, you'll be setting the tax rate, so another important discussion to have, and so we'll still be certainly a bit, take up a little bit of your time in doing that. And also, there is on your action item tonight, there was a, there is a Verizon public hearing that was held earlier today. Typically, it's done the day of the hearing, day of the event, so it was held earlier today, and there was nobody there from the public that actually attended. It was, there was a representative from Verizon that was at the, at the hearing, and so the recommendation that does come from the town engineer is to approve. I will have, I have that report here as well. Then last but not least, there is something that I do want to, two things, actually, two things I wanted to mention to you. One is the fact that earlier tonight, I did meet with the stadium advisory committee and talked about the, the single license concept, which they were actually very appreciative of, and they said that, they agree that, you know, having one license is a lot easier on them, because they don't have to be out every single time that an event occurs. So their, their time will be a little bit more focused, and certainly give them a little bit more time to spend time with their families, so not having to come out every single time. So they were very appreciative of that. The second thing is an idea that's come up through, through the rank and file, through our director of Council on Aging and Human Services, Mark Craig, is a concept known as Citizens Academy. And one of the things that we've talked about during the last financial summit was, that came out of that, was that more opportunity to get more people involved in understanding how government actually works and how the, how the different functions work. And I've seen this concept work in several different communities, and Mark has actually put together a proposal for us to give, get some consideration to. So I'll get, I'll send this around to you all, you can start taking a look at this, but this is a really great idea, and I think, I want to give Mark a lot of credit for this, because it's something that really, I think, will, will be helpful to a lot of residents, and also could be, serve as a basis for getting, for recruiting members to serve on different committees, to get them involved, more involved in how government actually works here in the local level. So I'm appreciative of the opportunity to work with Mark on this, and I think you'll find it very, to be very interesting as we pass this along to you. That's all I had. Mike?
I just wanted to also echo, you know, the chairman's thoughts on Veterans Day. It was a wonderful event. My wife and I enjoyed the concert, I enjoyed seeing the high school auditorium near, nearly full, and I thought it was fantastic, enjoyed it, and it was really a great showing for the town of Foxborough.
Mention who the band was again, it was the Massachusetts National...
Massachusetts 215th Army Band.
Okay.
And I didn't know until, you know, the other night, until, until yesterday, that Johnny could sing. I knew he could play about a dozen or more instruments, but it was great, and they highlighted him, as well as some other musicians, and they were phenomenal to Ally and Lisa and everyone else who had a hand in putting that together, well done.
And I'll tell you, just to jump on, I don't know how Ally got them, they're very hard to get, sought off... very hard to get, sought off after band in the Commonwealth, I mean, they, typically you have to get on their schedule two or three years in advance, so.
And she, it turned out that it was, it was almost accidental in a way, she was pretty cheap, and working with some of the members on, on a couple of other different projects, and she was, it'd be nice if we had the band play at, you know, on Veterans Day, and ultimately that trickled down through the group and they, they agreed to do it, so, it was a surprise, I didn't realize that your son was in, actually in the band, and they was, and he was, he was great, great to watch yesterday, so it was great to see that.
Great. All right, we'll do some action, Mike, did you get your computer up and going?
Yes. A motion to approve Verizon New England Inc.'s petition for a conduit location at Springbrook Road, the distribution of intelligence and communication.
Second.
Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Motion to approve the JC's public event application to place holiday decorations on the Common on November 30th, 2019, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m.
Second.
Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Motion to approve the JC's public event application for Carolene on the Common, December 19th, 2019, from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Second.
Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Motion to approve Sergeant Ken Fitzgerald's tuition reimbursement in the amount of $1,849.50.
Second.
Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Motion to improve, to approve gift donation of $500 to the planning department from the Barrows Insurance Agency for the wayfinding, wayfinding signs.
Second.
Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Motion to approve gift donation of $5,000 to the planning department from FM Partners LLC, Jeff Salatin, Forbes Crossing, for the wayfinding signage.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just under discussion with that, does that get, we're, we're pretty much fundraising now to move forward with that project.
We're getting, we're getting close to $10,000 to get the first wave, yeah.
So we're good to move forward on that first base now with that, okay.
All those in favor?
Motion to approve a gift donation of $250.12 to the Veteran Services Department from Foxborough Never Forgets Inc. to be used for Purple Heart signs.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'm gonna recuse myself.
As you are.
Because I made the donation.
Foxborough Never Forgets, okay, all approved. And we got one last one that's not on the list, from Recreation, I'll have Chief read that one, on the bottom.
Okay. From Recreation, move to approve the annual light-up of the Town Tree Lighting Event on November 30th, 2019, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Second.
Any further discussion, all those in favor? And then we'll take a motion to adjourn from open session to go into executive session and not return to open session.
Motion to adjourn to go into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations concerning the town manager's contract, and the board not to reconvene in open session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Right.
Roll call, do we have to do a roll call?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ed O'Leary, yes?
David, yes.
Mark, yes. Lee, yes?
Chris, yes.